First order of business today, first of all, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for July 8th. I'd like to welcome everybody. We have a unique evening this evening. Actually, it's not that unique, but for the second year in a row, we get to congratulate the Milford girls softball team for their outstanding achievement on the field. At a record of 26-1, they became nationally ranked, and a lot of credit goes to a lot of hard work from a lot of people. I know these young ladies will carry with them this achievement for the rest of their life, but what I'd like to do is recognize Coach Mackey first and have him come up. All the citations are very similar, but I want to read at least the first one and say, "The Town of Milford, Massachusetts Citation. Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby congratulate Brian Mackey, head coach, for your role in recognition of the 2013 Milford High School girls softball team that repeated as Massachusetts Division One State Championship." State champions. On behalf of the people of Milford and the Selectmen, we extend our very best wishes and express the hope and good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this day, the eighth day of July 2013, and that's on behalf of each of the members of the Board, myself, Dino Di Bartolomese, and Brian Murray.
Real quick, I'd just, I'd like to thank the Board for honoring us here tonight. I've always said, it's a very special situation that I'm in because I get to coach such a wonderful group of young ladies that do a great job, not only on the athletic field, but to do a great job in the classroom. It makes my job that much easier knowing they're going to get the job done during the day at school, and they come work real hard on the softball field. And to repeat as champions is a very difficult thing to accomplish, but these girls put a lot of work and hard effort into it, and we got the job done, and it's something that they can take with them for the rest of their lives. And the support we got from not only the school, their friends and family, but the town of Milford on our playoff run is something that I'll never forget, and just seeing all the Milfordians at the tournament games leading up to that state championship is something that was very special for me. I know it's very special for them and their families, and something like I said that's going to keep us bonded together forever, and we're honored to say we're 2013 state champs and back-to-back state champs again, so thank you very much.
Hopefully, I'll let you read the next person up. We'll go with coaches first.
Yeah, my coaching staff, my first, my top assistant is actually my sister Jenna Mackey, who can't be here tonight, she's still at work, but Jenna Mackey is one of our assistant coaches. Another one of our assistant coaches, who's actually at work tonight too, is Andrea Smith.
Is Andrea at work?
And my final assistant coach, who's also at work, is Krista Marcone. Now to our players. We're going alphabetically. Junior outfielder Giovanna Arcuti. Senior captain, third baseman Caroline Fairbanks. Sophomore, first baseman Ally Piggerstavo. Third baseman, junior Liam Murray. Second baseman, another one of our captains, senior Lauren Hannah. Senior right fielder, one of our captains as well, Elizabeth Stallone. Freshman pitcher and outfielder Jenny Levine.
Nice job.
Junior, plays everywhere for us, Sam Bonvino.
Congratulations, him.
Junior catcher Kylie Richards. Senior, one of our captains, center fielder Rachel Levine. Sophomore catcher Taylor Lebrun.
Congratulations, thank you, Taylor.
Freshman, shortstop, had the game-winning hit for us in the state final game, Joe Powers. Junior pitcher Caleb Barris.
Congratulations, Caleb.
Freshman catcher Megan Jakes.
Congratulations, Megan.
Senior, another one of our captains, our pitcher Shannon Smith, unfortunately, he's not here tonight, she is also working too. And finally, the last girl I'd like to recognize who's not here with us either is our back girl, she is playing in an under-12, under-14, under-12 All-Star game tonight, Molly Muschili.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, congratulations again to the team.
Don't stay out too late. Hey, girls, how are you?
Okay, it's always good when we can start off a meeting on such a positive note. Great group of kids, great coach, and I know a lot of people worked hard to make sure those kids were outfitted, and a lot of parents went through an awful lot to be out there, so we appreciate everything that everyone did to see, to be a part of their success. All right, if we could shut the door, if somebody could shut the door, the last one in, and they're latched in the back. Next item on the agenda is the signing of a warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next is approval of the June 17th meeting minutes.
Motion.
Seconded.
Also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next is approval of the meeting minutes for June 27th.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded.
And also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. Does somebody have an item for the Board who does not have a scheduled meeting? If not, I'll move on to the next item. Next, we have scheduled appointments and hearings. There are no hearings this evening, so the first item we have is Steve Tredell, Rob Mitchell, John Walker, Casino Free Milford presentation.
Guess you guys all know me, I'm a registered professional engineer, civil engineering, and Rob Mitchell, if you haven't met him yet, is a registered professional engineer, chem engineering, and an MBA. At the Board of Select meeting on June 17th, we submitted to the Board an independent report, and that report was an in-depth technical evaluation of the Foxwoods proposal that was made to the Selectmen on June 3rd. And it was intended to be a tool to assist the Selectmen in your ongoing evaluation of the Foxwoods proposal. Now, we had originally intended to present that report in a public forum at this meeting as information for the general public, with the intent that the report would then be published on the town's website, so that the public could fact-check Foxwoods' claims that have already been posted on the town's website. But since you have had these three weeks to go through it, we don't want to take up the Board's time by reading the report at this meeting, but we simply ask that that report, along with other documents presented to you by our group, be posted on the town's website. We think our Milford community deserves the benefit of a balanced forum, and that Foxwoods should not have exclusive use and access to that website, so...
I want to address that right away, just first of all, I don't know, I'll check with the members of the Board, any issues or objections with this material being posted? We've been doing it routinely, right? Okay.
Absolutely. If you're able to email me in PDF format, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Very good.
Not a problem.
Done. We will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
To that point, though, there may be some information that is not on the website that has been presented and outside of this meeting. I may get in touch with you and try to fix that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, let's talk about the current impact evaluations that have been going on. That's really what we'd like to discuss tonight, and really, the fact that it's a moving target. Only a month ago, Foxwoods came with their definitive proposal, and they submitted what their plan was going to be, but things have changed weekly and, in fact, daily. The point is that there are real questions, that it's a real question of credibility to their proposal, and what has been posted on that website, some of which is, may not be factual, or some of which has changed, and the website has not been updated at this point. Also, the engineering designs are not really designs at this point, they're not engineered solutions, they're architectural renderings, they're conceptual, they're not detailed designs at this point, so we shouldn't be misconstruing them as true detailed designs. So let me just give you a couple of examples of the flux in the proposal. So, traffic and roads, there's three main topics that just keep coming up over and over again. So, the proposal that they made in June said that the collective distributor roads would be on the outside of 495, and a meeting after that, when they came actually to take a look at the roads, it was determined that the roads, the collective distributor was not going to be on the outside, but in fact, the expansion to 495 was going to be on the inside.
You're talking about their presentation on June 3rd to the community and to the Board?
Presentation on June 3rd.
June 3rd, okay.
Showed...
So it changed after that?
And the maps that were available at their office showed the roads on the outside, that was the proposal.
Okay, I just wanted, for the benefit of everybody else, you're immersed in the details, and I just want to make sure everybody understands the presentation of June 3rd is what we're talking about.
Yes.
So, the June 3rd proposal did have a conceptual sketch that showed the three lanes that currently exist on 495, and it showed two lanes outside of that that would be the collective distributor. In fact, what they're now proposing is just the opposite. There was...
Actually, it was because the federal highway rejected the idea of the ones on the outside and told them they had to use the median strip. That was why that was changed.
Okay.
Okay. So, most recently, Foxwoods has been having informational sessions. In fact, they had one last week over at the Doubletree, and they showed the collective distributor lanes on the outside, but the expansion was in the median strip. So, that is their current proposal. I don't believe it's been made public to you.
It's not.
It has been made public to the public, but it hasn't been updated on the website either. So, some of the concern I have is that what they're presenting is, has not been vetted, and it seems like, again, every week or every day, there's a new design that's being proposed by them. Second example is a traffic study. I think we all laughed at their presentation with the 1% increase on Route 16 and on Route 85 to the traffic. In fact, what they were saying was the peak flow was going to be 3,100 cars per hour on Route 85. That's 1% of 31, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm getting corrected by my better half here. So, Route 16 heading up to Holliston, 1% increase of 3,100 cars is 31 cars. Again, at the Doubletree Hotel, they've, they made a presentation that said the engineering has been vetted, that the numbers are wrong in terms of the amount of traffic on 495, as well as the amount of local traffic on Route 16, and it's much greater than that. Again, what's posted on the website for the town is the 1% number, it's not the new number. I think that there's going to be an updated presentation on Wednesday where some of these facts may come out, some of your informational sessions, but again, it's always a changing target here. So, the bottom line is, to date, there are no detailed reports. There's been a PowerPoint presentation, there is no definitive report from their consultant, there's no report from our consultant that shows these details. So, whatever's out in the public right now is hearsay, at best, okay? And I'm sorry, I'm going to take up a lot of time here, but just in the category of...
As long as we can get it done in 15 minutes.
Just plain annoying. One of their presentations showed this beautiful arched stone bridge going over 495. It hasn't been brought up again, it's probably infeasible to do, but it's presented to the public, is that reality, is that what they're going to do? Is it going to be written into the mitigation agreement, is it going to be part of the host agreement, or are they just trying to sell pretty pictures at this point? And I think we've got to be very careful about what goes on to the website, so that people don't see a picture like that and think that it's fact, okay? Location, and I'll try to keep it inside of your timeframe. Again, the location has changed, you may not have seen it, it's been presented at the Doubletree last week. The Army Corps of Engineers has taken a look at it, there's salamanders, there are frogs, they can't build where they want to build. Now they're proposing that they build closer to Wildwood. There was a grandstand comment that said, "We're going to be 2,400 feet away from the nearest house." Okay, that's, we're going to be building a long way away from the houses. Now it's back to 600 feet from the houses. That's their proposal, 2,400 to 600 feet. It's two football fields, it's a five-story building, it's over the tree line, it's in their backyard right now. So again, they present one thing, they've changed it because of the Army Corps of Engineers, but, you know, they presented it as a definitive plan. They said they've been to the Army Corps of Engineers, they said they've been to the Highway Department. In fact, our town's lawyer said there are no unsolvable problems, okay, at one of the meetings that we had here before they made their presentation. That, to me, is an unsolvable problem. It's a complete relocation of the site, so. The same thing with the water, I'll keep it brief. Now, we've talked about, is there enough water, is there not? They've gone to Midway and asked for water. Well, if there's enough water, then why are you going to Midway? Okay? They've made proposals for putting laundry off-site. Well, if there's enough water, why are you doing laundry off-site? Then they say, "Well, we're going to do laundry either in Milford or maybe some other location." Well, if there's not enough water to do laundry on their site, how's there going to be enough water to do laundry somewhere else in Milford? So, in my opinion, they're telling you what you want to hear, okay? And they're making up stories as they go along, so they're either not thinking through their plan, they're telling stories, or they're just rushing this design, and I'm not sure which one is the reality.
So, I think what is more telling is the issues that the town will be facing, that Foxwoods is not addressing or even acknowledging. Let's start with police and fire. They said that crime will not increase. There's a ton of evidence out there, we found it, at existing casinos, including DUIs, embezzlement, prostitution, drugs, all these have increased significantly in the towns that have existing casinos. Foxwoods hasn't presented any documented evidence of their claim, but ironically, they proposed $2 million a year for the police and fire departments. So if they claim no crime, why make the offer? The issue must be formally evaluated to establish what the real number is to be mitigated. The school system, again, omitted. The impact of the school system has been questioned just about at every public meeting that we've been at. The potential for increased population, as well as the disproportionate cost for special ed requirements such as English as a second language, is a concern. It's happened at all the other casino locations, so much so that your superintendent has initiated his study to figure out as best he can what the impact is in these called these other towns. So the process, which is supposed to provide an evaluation of the impacts, seems to be dismissed by Foxwoods, particularly in the impact of our school system, which, as you know, is more, almost, is almost half of our town's budget. Big impact there. Property values. Much like the school system, property values have been ignored. On one hand, Foxwoods has made claims that the property values actually increase, and yet, at one of the Selectmen's meetings, Mr. Butera specifically stated that property values on the east side of 495 would decrease. The point is that there's no formal process that's been initiated for evaluating the impact on the property value specifically for Milford, and as a result, there are only extrapolations from other regions. And there's a good example of a totally independent research by the National Association of Realtors that was executed for Springfield, and that study concludes that a 4.6% decrease in property value can be expected generally for property near a large casino. Now, given the unfortunate depressed nature of Springfield as compared to Milford, one can only project that the decrease in property values here is going to be more. Having said that, in doing some math and information we got from the assessors, the total property value for residential properties in Milford is around $2 billion and change. If we assume that the property value decrease would be the same as Springfield, and use that 4.6%, the total loss to our homeowners would be almost $100 million after the casino was built. Note that this equates to a loss of about $1.7 million in tax revenue for the town. And will Foxwoods fund a $99 million or $100 million escrow account to homeowners so that they can recover their losses when it comes time for them to sell? Or is this going to be dismissed, as Foxwoods suggests it should be? Local businesses, there's a, Foxwoods claimed that they have $50 million in local vendor purchases that they will make. There are no specifics to this claim. Who are the local vendors that are going to supply this to them? Or are they going to continue to use the national vendors with whom they've negotiated discounts based on volume? On the other hand, what has been omitted is what about our local established restaurants, salons, retail businesses who owners live in and have a real stake in our community? Their businesses will be decimated by the one-stop self-contained resort that uses their own restaurants and shops to lure people into the gambling venue. Don't we own these businesses, an impact study? These are the businesses who truly have Milford interest in their best and have been employing local residents for years. Their future for continued operations or expansions are more than uncertain.
So if we just talk about the mitigation, we've touched on a few, I just want to go through them one more time as a list. Water, sewer, traffic, jobs, economic impact on the businesses, crime, medical and fire services, healthcare facilities, rental housing, the school system, property values, just the overall tenor of the town, whether it's still suburban or urban, and any other social impacts. If you look at that list, Foxwoods is only, and we are only studying, three of those items, so the other items are not on, they may be on our list to consider as a global mitigation, and some gross number may cover those, but there is no formal study that I've seen to date on these items, certainly not one that's being funded by the town with outside consulting.
Well, in all honesty, you haven't seen any studies.
True.
So, to put some of those in different groupings, the fact of the matter is, no studies have been presented, and the intent of the meetings coming up in this month are to specifically address those studies.
Okay.
And I'm not saying it's as comprehensive as the list you have, I'm just saying, there are social impact, there are economic impact as part of this presentation that rolls out this month.
Okay. So, I may, at the end of all of these meetings in July, come back and say, "We have addressed, you know, six out of 12." And, you know, we'll discuss that one later.
So, what we're saying is, we believe that each of these issues is serious enough to have a separate impact report to the Selectmen, and that impact report, those reports should have an exact summary, they should have research based on measurable parameters, they should have specific conclusions and opinions by the consultants doing them, they should have recommendations for mitigation, and they should have costs for mitigation measures. All of those things you will need if you go to the host agreement negotiations. I don't see how you could do it without it, you know? Let's talk about just the schedule that your attorneys proposed. That was established in a letter by your attorneys shortly after you gave Foxwoods a six-week extension, and that was a pretty straight, would, straight, simply, simple and straightforward schedule.
Easy for you to say.
Easy for me to say. The first was to present the proposal by the end of May, a definitive proposal. The second was to evaluate the casino impacts to this community by your town consultants and department heads, and that was supposed to take place June or July, and that was barely, two months, barely adequate time for that. The third thing is negotiate the host community agreement in August by you guys, and then vet that host agreement to the public in September, and then the referendum in October. That was a simple, straightforward schedule. What happened, what actually happened, in our opinion, is that Foxwoods has hijacked the town's impact analysis process and turned it into a series of community outreach, sales pitches, and PR sessions. June has already been lost with adjustments to their proposals, and basically, most of that proposal has changed in those things that Ron has mentioned. And it looks to me like, you know, here it is, July 8th, it looks like most of July is going to be compromised as these major changes in site plans and highways have to be dealt with. As an engineering consultant who has performed these kinds of studies, it's clear to me that your consultants and department heads cannot possibly provide you with the information that Selectmen Murray so aptly described at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, and I think I got it right, Brian. I don't have the kind of information where I feel comfortable making a decision of this magnitude. Tell me what's right, tell me what's wrong, tell me what's questionable, and I assure you that you will not have adequate information on impacts to this community if you have to negotiate a host agreement in August.
And I second that. We're really urging you not to enter into a host agreement until all of the information is complete. The design is constantly changing. If we enter into an agreement and there are changes to the highway because they don't have a final agreement with the Highway Department or with the Army Corps of Engineers, and the agreement is not rock-solid, we're going to be left with an agreement that... the agreement is not rock solid, we're going to be left with an agreement that we have to abide by as their detailed design moves forward. So we either have to be very careful in how that host agreement is drafted, so that if, I think as you said, highway moves 15 feet, that's beyond the scope of the host agreement and therefore it's null and void, or do we allow some latitude in their detailed design as it moves forward? I think we're just at risk trying to negotiate something this early in the game when they haven't even decided how they're going to do their roads, or their water, or their site location. I know that the Gaming Commission has put some time constraints on it, but we really shouldn't be held to the Gaming Commission's timeline. We should be held to our own standards in terms of vetting this process. I mean, to that end, the Gaming Commission was supposed to vet the company's information, their financials, you know, their individual organization, what are their criminal backgrounds. That never happened, okay? So it's concerning, it's puzzling, that we're going to be entering into an agreement that we don't even know the company's financials. In fact, Mr. Butera stood up and said, after we finish negotiating our restructuring, our debt restructuring, which is otherwise known as avoiding bankruptcy, he was going to publish all of their financials. It was going to be available on July 1st. It's post-July 1st, and again, we have not seen anything from Foxwoods on their financials. It's another promise that's been made by them, and it's another promise that's been broken. So I guess my conclusion is, in my opinion, Foxwoods is just playing the casino impact evaluation process like the carnival game of whack-a-mole. Remember that game? The mole comes up, you hit it, comes up another hole, you hit it over there, you hit it over here, and it just keeps moving around.
I was never able to hit the first one.
But that's what they're doing to your consultants and department heads. You know, all these verbal changes, there's nothing in writing, there's nothing definitive.
So again, I hope you're better at this. Water. Yeah, we have enough here, well, no we don't, so we're going to go look at low fixture toilets, no, that's not enough, we're going to go look at midway, no, that's not enough. And the mole just keeps popping up wherever you push the other one down. So really, we have to get a definitive report, definitive study by our consultants, and a final design before we can enter into any kind of an agreement.
Okay, let me just go to the board members and make sure that they have the opportunity to respond in any way they feel appropriate. Dean, any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, Steve, thanks again, once, you know, very nice presentation, the way you came across, being an engineer and all that. I think a lot of things that you've asked, that you've stated here, I think we've all been seeing for a few months, there's no question about that. I mean, before anything is done, we have to be sure. To me, I'd rather have things having more time than less time. I think we can take two approaches. All the things that you've nicely articulated, and as far as the host agreement, I mean, that's a new process. I think we should begin, and nothing has to be binding, but I want to know, and it may be coming to that point, because we're going to rely on our department heads, town officials, like we have before, to delve into these reports with the consultants, to give us information, to say, these are the things that we agree with, disagree with, need more information, these are the areas that could be mitigated. And so, that's what I want. I'd rather have a situation where we have more, I don't want to have all this information in six weeks, I'd rather start receiving it now. I'd rather have some discussions with the department heads and all that. I've spoken informally with some of them to make sure, like we have in the past, you know, you've got to make sure that the information that is in is accurate, is correct, it can be verified, same sort of the information, statements you have made, so. But I think as the chairman said, the first real test will be this Wednesday, to see what they present. The report that you gave to us a couple of weeks ago, Steve, we gave that to the engineer, Mr. Ridd. Say, okay now, you know, these are some, you know, excellent points, and a lot of people have done a yeoman's job, you know, outlining stuff, and I think this process helps the entire board, and I think it's something that has to be done. So I want to see what their response is, and then once we get their response, then the consultants will review it. So, I mean, that's how I look at it. To me, more time is better. I wish we had another, matter of fact, I said it a few months ago, I wish the Gaming Commission said that, okay, instead of having a referendum, everything being done by December, I wish we could have had till April. That would have given us more time. Because to me, when you have more time, whenever you write something, it's not a good situation. So, but the proof is still in what they present to us, and I think the first step will be, now there were meetings today with traffic engineers, both sides, and then the presentation will be made on Wednesday. So I'm looking at that, and we haven't had, I don't think we've received that report yet, but, you know, we have to make sure that the officials, the police chief, fire chief, the town engineer, that the sewer commissioners, schools, all those things that you mentioned. Some of those things are not a real problem with me. With me, there are three or four real big issues that really have to be resolved, and if we can't resolve them, then I think it speaks for itself. But I just want to say, you know, it's a very nice job pointing these points out, and in many cases, I think you're accurate.
I think your point of the timeframe, you'd like it longer, again quoting Mr. Butera, if he can't hit the schedule, he was willing to shake hands and walk away as friends.
Yeah, that's what he says, no question.
And I think the bottom line for me is, the design hasn't been completed, where several months post when they were given the opportunity to start their design. To your point, we still don't have any written reports that have been published. I think it was supposed to get published tomorrow, be made available on the website, so we have at least a day to review it prior to the Wednesday meeting. But again, where we seem to be caving to their timeframe as opposed to pushing a timeframe on them, for what it's worth. I think there has to be a point where we say enough is enough. It might not be tonight, but I may be coming back and asking every couple of weeks if, with your permission, depending upon whether there's progress or no progress at these meetings on Wednesday nights.
That's our message, Jim. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Rob, Steve.
Yes, thank you. Steve, how does that Springfield Realtors report define "near"?
Define?
Near.
Near, N-E-A-R?
Yeah, you said, if I read it correctly, it says, for 4.6 decrease in property value can be expected for property near a large casino.
Yes.
So what are we talking about?
Within a mile.
Okay, within a mile.
Yeah.
All right. But I mean, so you took that, and you extrapolated loss of value for the entire town?
I did.
Okay, well, your first report extrapolated just on the immediate vicinity, about 85 residents?
Yeah, it was on the east side of 495.
Okay, all right.
You know, we don't really know, because there hasn't been a good study done of that.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just trying to get a sense as to the thought process that you're using.
The numbers that have been kicked around are actually 10 or 15% for property value loss over on the east side, over on that side of 495. So again...
Does that contradict what the Springfield report says?
It does.
Okay.
But again, it's Springfield, it's not Milford, and the Milford study hasn't even been considered.
Okay.
Yeah, that's downtown Springfield kind of properties. It was a pretty depressed area, if you've seen it.
Okay. Yeah.
But I mean...
But still, I mean, you're not talking, you're not talking numbers, you're talking percentages, so the percentages would be relative. I just picked up on that, and I just wanted to try to understand the thought process, you know, going originally from the immediate vicinity, you know, then to the entire town. Let me ask you about the employment. Are you under the assumption that all of the 3,000 jobs are going to be out-of-town residents?
No. But we are on the assumption of a large number of them will be, because that's the history of other casinos.
What's the, do you know what the unemployment rate is in Milford right now?
I've been told later 900 unemployed in Milford.
Okay.
So you would be getting several thousand, you know, a couple thousand outside of Milford.
Okay. So that's based on, because I don't know if I have that report anywhere that shows what the unemployment is.
I'd have to dig up the source on that.
Okay. What's the ELL percentage in the school system right now, as opposed to the entire student population?
I don't know, Brian.
Okay.
I don't know that number.
Do you know what the increase in ELL has been over the last three to five years in Milford?
Has Mr. Tremblay provided that information?
I haven't gotten a report from him, no.
You haven't gotten a report from him yet, no.
No.
I'm pretty sure he was looking into that.
Okay. All right.
He was concerned about that, in particular because of the situation down in Connecticut for the surrounding towns. That's what they've explained.
Yeah, no, I understand, I, you know, I saw that news article, but, I mean, you know, from what I saw in the article, I certainly wouldn't call that a report from the superintendent in any way, shape, or form. But, you know, generally, I mean, you're absolutely correct. I mean, I, for one, and let me just speak individually here, because I don't want to bind my fellow board members on anything, I'm not going to be prepared to go into any host community agreement until, number one, the issues that we have identified, and they have been identified, and they've been identified for a number of years. And I think your organization has done a nice job of fleshing out some of the particulars of those issues, but clearly the issues are on the table. So unless those issues can be answered to my satisfaction that they are in fact not issues, or mitigated to a sense that I think it's reasonable enough for folks to vote on it, I'm not prepared to go forward on any type of agreement. And in terms of the scheduling, you know, we're not being driven by the Foxwoods schedule, okay? I mean, this is a proposal that has gotten presented to the town, and I think I explained this to you when I went to the neighborhoods. You know, as a representative of the entire town, I feel a responsibility to fully investigate it, to find out as much information as I can to see whether or not the proposal is a good one or a bad one. That's where I'm at right now. Now, in the context of that, we do have a time framework that has been set by the statute. That's the roof we operate under. So we have to operate within the context of that timeframe. That's what's driving the process. Now, these public hearings that are upcoming in July, you know, that was scheduled, you know, that was part of the process, that was contemplated early on to get information out to the public as to what the proposal is, and also intended to do, I think, exactly what is being done, which is critique the proposal and find problems in it, and then of course, that's going to result in some adjustments to the proposal. But at some point, there's going to be a day of judgment. I don't know if it's July 31st, or August 2nd, or whatever it is, but it's going to be fairly close that, you know, the book is in, guys, you know, this is what it is, okay? You know, it's either good or bad. So where I view us being at is working towards that. Now, the question is whether or not that proposal can reach a point of satisfaction within the timeframe that we have. If it can, then I would be favorable for a host agreement. If we can't, I'm not, you know? So that's kind of where I'm at on this. I will tell you that personally, I'm very upset because I went to the neighborhoods with Bill and Dino and Rick, I think it was June 27th or 28th, whatever day it was, and, you know, talked to people at Zane Circle, Zane Ridge, at Wildwood, at Attilio, and the people at Wildwood Drive were very concerned about the proximity of the building. And I stood there, and I feel very bad about this. I stood there and I told them that, you know, the building is not going to be near you. The building is going to be farther away. You're going to have woods, you're going to have plenty of cover, you know? I told them that. And I think it was the following week, I mean, it came out, I think, on a Monday or something, and I heard it on the radio, or read it in the paper, you know, nobody contacted me, and the thing is being moved to within 600 feet of those people that I went to the neighborhood and told them that they didn't have to worry about it. So to me, you know, that's very upsetting. I understand the fact that, you know, we're watching bread being baked, but everybody wants the slice right now, you know? And I understand that, you know, there's a work in progress, but it's a limited timeframe. This is not something that they can go on for years and years. There is an endpoint on this. But the question I'm going to ask, you know, Wednesday night is, at what point did they realize that those buildings had to be moved, and why wasn't it communicated to us before we went out and talked to residents of the town? So I understand your points, I understand your thought process, you know, clearly, the issues are real ones, and, you know, for me, the question is going to be whether or not the developer can respond to these issues such that it would be a feasible project.
To some of your earlier points, you were asking about the English as a second language, some property values.
Yeah, they call it now ELL, like English language learners. When I was on the school committee, it was ESL, before it was something else, so, I know.
Whack-a-mole.
Yeah.
I think our perspective here is, casino-free Milford, the two of us have certain skills. We are not educators, we are not Realtors, and professionals have to do these reports. And what I don't see is that report even being started or discussed. So, you know, the report that happened out in Springfield by the Realtors is not being done here. I really can't answer that question. I know in my gut that it's going, my property value is going to go down when the light's shining down and there's a traffic jam, but I can't put a number on that. Okay? We need professionals to do that, and whether it's six or nine items on that list that haven't been studied, I'm not sure what that number is, but it's not being studied. So that's my point.
Let me just reinforce, that's our message tonight.
Well, then you know something that this board doesn't know.
Which is?
Because I don't know that it's not being studied.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. It's not, it's not on the, those items are not on the list for Wednesday night discussions.
In terms of the economic impact, it's not in that grouping?
I would have to check that one in particular.
Because there is one meeting that has that, okay? And so I, and I'm not challenging you, I'm just saying before we state it as fact, I just want to make sure that we give these to the town administrator, make sure that things like emergency services, hospital, economic impact, property values, there is going to be reports, there is going to be information, and there is potential mitigation, or we have to go back to the consultants.
We're not here to lay in the bushes and throw rocks.
No, no, no. This is helpful.
No.
As the other members have said.
We really believe that you guys should walk into any negotiation session with a report on each one of these issues, and know what the mitigation should be, and know what the hell it's going to cost. And that's where you start your negotiation.
You know that.
Well, if I could just, one second. Yeah, in terms of the property values, I mean, we discussed that when I was out on the site, and we did, we discussed that with the Zane Circle folks, and then also, I think, the Attilio Circle folks. And, you know, we're planning on meeting individually with our attorneys to communicate, you know, the issues that we have, you know, to the Foxwoods people. And, I mean, you know, since that meeting, I haven't heard anything to dissuade me from what I think might be a reasonable mitigation, that, you know, they set up a fund, whether it's directly to the condominium association for that property specifically identified, or an overall town fund, so that folks who do feel their property values have been decreased can make application, go through some sort of abatement process, and recover that money. So that's something that I'm going to lay out on the table as a responsible mitigation measure. Now, you know, I'd asked Mr. Valani to contact the assessor, to, you know, get some baseline numbers of the town, so, I mean, that's one area that I think is a reasonable mitigation. Now, what is Foxwoods going to say to that? You know, I don't know. You know, if they say, that's great, we'll put money towards it, that's fine, then that's one way to handle it. If they don't, well, you know, that makes me less inclined to be favorable for that type of an agreement. Similarly, because I know there was questions about, you know, the multifamily housing, we could set up a grant-type program for landowners who have these kinds of houses to make application to, get funding, you know, fix up the houses, there could be a recapture agreement on the property, so if they sell it within 10 or 15 years, the fund gets a certain portion back. It's not dissimilar to what we do with the CDBG housing grants, except we could expand it. So, I mean, to me, that's, those are two ways, I think, to try to head off any losses of property value. of property value. You know, what are those numbers? You know, how extensive ought it be?
That's when you need professionals to work that out.
Right, but, I mean, those are the kinds of things that, you know, that I'm thinking about, and we also mentioned, you know, the illegal workers, you know, that that's a big concern about casinos. Well, you know, personally, I would put in the host agreement that they have to join the ICE Image Program, just as the town of Milford did. That actually would give us more control over this business than we have in other businesses. So, I mean, these are all the kinds of things that, you know, I want to, you know, put on the table and see what their response is going to be. But it is a process, and we're working through the process. And I know some people are very nervous and uncomfortable about that process, but, you know, I would just ask that you trust us, that we are looking at all of these issues and looking for ways to minimize whatever issues there are there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, it's not a matter of trust from us. We're just trying to provide information for you as to what a standard should be.
Oh, no, I understand that, and you've done a very nice job of that.
So, just as a last point to this, you know, I share your frustration, and I share Brian's comment, that, you know, they've got themselves in a situation where they're losing credibility with each presentation they provide. And I say that because it was on June 3rd that they presented a CD Collector Road where they had the CD on the outside, or the collectors on the outside, and they left 495 intact. They've not come back to this board, but that was a presentation in front of this board. They've not come back to this board with any changes.
That's right.
When they went to the Hoboken Citizen Club the other night, they presented Plan A, which was the plan that Brian spoke about, it was over 2,500 feet from any residence. And we represented that, not because of the Hoboken Citizens Club presentation, but because that was their plan of record. It wasn't, well, I think, one night later, I'm sorry, three nights later, one business day, where they went to the Portuguese Club, where Brian and I happened to both be in attendance, and they presented a Plan A and B. It was the following night when they went to the Doubletree and presented Plan B. What we're seeing is, in my opinion, a developer who, whose initial plans, and when they went off for six weeks and said they'd have something substantive from all their engineers, didn't come back with anything that would pass superficial scrutiny with any of the powers that be, whether it be, whether it be the Army Corps of Engineers, whether it be Mass Highway, the federal highway. It wasn't feasible.
We have a point.
Given the restrictions, given the restrictions to the thing. So what I'm looking at every time I attend a different presentation, and again, nothing formally back to this board, is I'm looking at the plan du jour, and it's frankly frustrating. And I find it unacceptable. So, and I agree with you. So, you know, the only thing I can say is buckle up, because I expect there to be more. If you think that this plan is finalized, any plan is finalized from the developer as it relates to water, traffic, sewer, I'll give you a frustration just as a point. This board was provided a draft study on traffic last Friday. It was asked that it not go out to the community, because they would still be negotiating it with the, and going over the details today. Part of your frustration, that you're walking into a meeting on Wednesday to discuss traffic, where we have very capable professionals within our residents, they don't have this information in front of them. It shows you how fluid everything is. And I have no reason to believe that once it's presented to us on this Wednesday, that there won't be additional things that are significant to the residents of that area that will change. So I would tell you, don't hold high expectations that things aren't going to change even after these presentations.
We don't, though.
Good. Because that's not been their history. You know, and I would even correct your presentation to one point. When you started with the history, you started with June 3rd. This community was committed to, back in '09, that there wouldn't be a local connector, that everything would come off 495.
Flyover.
A flyover.
Flyover, yeah.
That's right.
And since then, that's changed. Now we have a Route 16 connector, and by their account, it will significantly change the traffic and increase traffic on Route 16, especially in that area. Now, those are their words. That's much different than when this board started to have discussions with at least the Crossroads LLC folks, that it was not going to have a local connection. And as a matter of fact, there are people on this board that have represented that without, that if it had a local connection, it was dead on arrival. So I don't know where we go, other than to say, "I'm prepared to listen to any of the plans, get the soup of the day and find out what it is, see what they present, and see if we go forward." I understand the community's frustration as well. It shouldn't be lost on anybody that this is divisive. This can pit neighbor against neighbor, family member against family member, sections of the community against other sections of the community, and then also have on top of it what the emotional and very real financial concerns that specific neighbors are going to have. Are they losing their nest egg? Is the college fund that the children they were banking on inequity now evaporated? Is there enough of that, so that life events, as Brian talked about when we go through mitigation, is it just when they sell the house they're entitled to some escrow account? Or is it a life event that they might want to tap into that equity and it's now gone? So those are things that we have to consider and talk about. We haven't yet. We're kind of flying by the seat of our pants in the neighborhood, talking about the types of things that might be possible. No, because I had citizen participation, and we had an appointment here with these gentlemen, so I want to go with that. If there's not anything more, I think we appreciate.
I guess I just want to go on record, I understand how much you guys are working on this project, how thoughtful you are about all the issues that are on the table, and how much you love the community. So I do trust you.
And we're not here to snipe, we're here to provide whatever assistance we can to you, as we said way back in March, and that's the mission of this group.
Okay. And for the record, if there was a pro-group casino group that wanted to meet with this board, we'd be entertaining their discussion as well.
You bet.
So it's not selective in our process of who we're hearing with. You happen to be professionals who are coming forward, talking about this, residents that are concerned, coming forward, and that's what we're here for. We represent you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Rob.
Be careful of the cord. Joe, watch out for the cord, you're going to take a whole sound system with you.
Take care.
We're going to let folks exit.
Be careful of the cord.
Take care, Tom.
Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, just an update on the Milford Youth Center. We have received 10 submissions for qualifications from firms to perform full and complete design and building services for the renovation of Milford Youth Center. They each have also presented a separate fee proposal. The Design Selection Committee will be evaluating submissions and proceeding towards a selection. You will see, finally, work beginning on the police roof. You should see a crane moving into position tomorrow. Materials should be on site, so work should begin there this week. And then, finally, if you've been to Town Hall today, there's some work being done on the sidewalk areas. This work should be complete in the next few days. We had a couple of cracks in areas that were somewhat hazardous, so that work is being taken care of. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Any questions or comments for Mr. Valani?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, no.
Okay, thank you. The next one we have is under new business, oh, I'm sorry, old business. Under old business, we have the Town Administrator Senior Center Director recommendation.
Yes, thank you. As you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the senior center position was advertised in the Beacon, Town Crier, and on MMA and Town websites. Applications would due June 21st. We did receive 24 applications. A committee of myself, Phyllis Ahern, and Vincent Scesari interviewed six candidates. We took the list of 24 and agreed to interview six. I want to thank Phyllis, Ian, Vin, for their hard work and their dedication in helping make a selection. I am recommending Susan Trotter-Clark for the position. Sue has over 20 years' experience as the Director of the Community Development Office. She was a key member of the Senior Center Building Committee. I believe she will be a caring and compassionate advocate and leader for the elderly in the town of Milford. I know she has strong administrative and supervisory skills, as well as many years of experience in writing grant applications. I am confident that she can take the senior center to a new level, and based upon that, I enthusiastically recommend Susan Trotter-Clark for the position.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
And, you know, just for my thoughts here, you know, it was my hope that somebody that made it through the process would have worked with the seniors directly in the capacity of a senior center director. I understand your rationale and reasons, I'm not questioning that. For example, John Olafland's been working there for some months. I did not participate in the interview process, and I'm not going to question that, but I'll reach out to the members for a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, as always, we had a few good people who applied, and it's always difficult. But I think, as Mr. Valani has stated, as far as Sue Clark, I can only speak from direct experience. Sue's been here 18 years, worked very closely with her, she's brought in about $15 million into the town as far as the neighborhoods, the main streets, the facades, the rehab programs, other programs affecting other departments. Her experience in management, budgeting, working with state officials, local officials, the residents of the neighborhoods, working with senior citizens and rehabbing some of the older homes in the area, her work with the countryside healthcare and fundraising, the work that she's done with the neighborhoods that I held in the past couple of years, meeting with people one-on-one, the rapport that she has, the personality, the demeanor. And I think some of the things that, when I go to the nursing home, when I see Susan and there's no one around, and she's talking to people, talking to people in wheelchairs, and helping people go to their rooms and all that, I mean, no one sees that. So I've seen that, so I personally support the recommendation. I think she's done a tremendous job for the town of Milford over the past 18 years, and I think that, you know, we had a sweetheart in Ruth Ann, and she's in a better place right now. But all the things, all the good things and beneficial improvements that Ruth Ann has made for the seniors, I think that Sue Clark will be able to come in and, over time, continue those programs and hopefully add to it. So I think that, you know, she's done a great job, and I think she'll do a great job for the seniors of Milford. So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Brian?
I'm pleased to second that motion and just shed a little bit of history on Sue's involvement. You know, back in the mid-1990s, there really was one person advocating for a new senior center for the town of Milford, and that was Ruth Ann Bleakney. And she enlisted my help, and I think if we recall, the old two-room St. Mary's former classroom building on Winter Street that, I guess, was allegedly a senior center, and that was supposedly the best that we could do for the elders of our community, it was clear to me that we needed a new senior center. We enlisted people to help us, and at that time, it was a fairly controversial and difficult position. There were people who were not in favor of a new senior center, they felt that spending money for that building would not be a good decision. The location that was eventually proposed was actually contaminated land site, and that area of town was certainly not as nice as it is now. But one person that we did enlist, who was willing to step forward and help us, was Sue Clark. And she directed her community development grant project towards the senior center building, so that of the $3.5 million construction cost, she was able to attain $600,000 from the state to go towards that. As the project went along, she was a key member on the committee, she basically served as my treasurer, and she monitored every penny such that that project came in under budget. It was a huge burden that I did not have to shoulder, and if Ruth Ann was on my right, Sue was on my left on that project, bringing it to the point that it is right now. So I consider her as responsible as anyone for the building that's there now, and of course, as Dean has indicated, she's only stayed more involved through her housing rehab program and her other interactions with seniors. So I think she'll be a great director, and I look forward to having her start.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'm certainly not someone who's going to not support this on a matter of principle here, but, you know, it was, again, my preference that John Olafland be looked at and possibly get this nomination because of her work day in, day out, within the senior center for the last, what, I think since last summer. But having said that, we have a motion, we have a second, and I'm prepared to make that unanimous. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. None opposed. The next item on the agenda is Town Administrator FY13 Appropriation Transfer. Now, Rick, could you give us some background? This has, the sheet that the selectmen have been provided have a department, a transfer, an amount, and a transfer to, so the from to, but none of the rationale behind it. Could you provide us some of that?
Absolutely. The first apartment, 162 elections, $4,000, basically, very simple, there were two unplanned special elections, so there was a need for the transfer. Department 192, public buildings, that money was taken from general expense. The reason, there were just some additional repairs beyond the estimated budget. As you know, repair and maintenance is a separate appropriation under Article IV. Department 220, fire, there was a need to pay required maintenance and repair bills for work done to the emergency vehicles. Again, the repair and the maintenance is an estimate, and unfortunately, it's sometimes unpredictable. Same thing, well, actually, Department 421, highway, there was overtime for salary and wages. They had some weather situations where they needed to pay overtime for salary and wages. And then the last one, again, highway, general expense, again, repair to vehicles and equipment. So again, they just exceeded their repair and maintenance estimates. These are typical, they have been approved by the Finance Committee, obviously, they need your approval as a Board of Selectmen. The Finance Committee did vote unanimously to approve these transfers, so I again need you now to also approve these transfers.
Okay.
So those are the, that's the rationale behind each of them.
Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have Skewell Corporation, doing business at Skewell's Pizza Bar, one-day license.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. And this is for a charity, right? My wish?
Correct, yes.
I'll second that.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have a permit to obstruct Breaking AIDS Ride is the name of the organization. Chief Olafland has looked at it, provided information, most of it will be on the Chief Olafland has looked at it, provided information. Most of it will be on the trail. Are there any questions or comments the board members have?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
Also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the Town Accountant Proposal for Audit Contract, and I'll read from this report some of it. With the completion of fiscal year annual audit, the three-year contract is due with Scanlon and Associates, or is facing, the town is facing signing a new contract with somebody else. While one school of thought would determine that extended relationship with same audit team may cause a loss of independence, objectivity of the firm, another would argue that constant change would actually cause vital historical data relevant to the town, or loss of that, rather. So, in any event, ultimately, the Town Accountant, Zach Taylor, is recommending that we change auditors within the firm and therefore get that different set of eyes and a little bit more independence from the same firm. Is there any concerns, comments, or thoughts from the board members?
No, I like that, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I was hoping that would be coming. I've also spoken to Attorney Valani and also our Town Accountant and asked Zach if he would talk to this firm to see if they could provide some assistance to us as far as the two areas that we have an opening. We have an opening in the Treasurer's Department and also the tax collector after August 31st, I believe. And so, part of this, and I think Rick can add more to it, they would be willing to, whether it be weekly or monthly, go in and provide any assistance, consultants basis-
Okay.
-to those two departments.
So, there may be an additional scope of services that we can take advantage of-
Yes.
-that they provide that expertise. Thank you.
Right, Rick, if needed, if needed.
Right, okay. Brian, any comments to-
No, I think Zach's report is a good one. I think it's important to note that the price is locked in for three years, which is good. In the past, we've had incremental increases, but the increase is small over what we've got budgeted now, and we're locked in for the same number for three years, so I don't think-
So, with that-
I don't think you can beat that.
With that, is there a motion to approve the contract?
Motion.
With Scanlon and Associates? Okay, so that's unanimous. Next, the Chief of Police has written to Town Administrator asking to get rid of surplus photography processing equipment and to, to make that, actually, to make that surplus, and that's darkroom and photo processing equipment that pretty much is outdated for their purposes with the advent of the digital photography and some of the technology they're taking advantage of today on the digital side.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
That was part of the building, build-out when that new police department was built, and they'd like to make that surplus.
Motion.
Second it.
I also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Do the members have any, I didn't go to old business, I'll start with old business. Any other old business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing. Back, I think it was two or three years ago, we enacted a bylaw, trash picking, and this would be for, you know, no person going through, rummaging through, disturbing any garbage, rubbish, or other trash or items placed near a public way. And that was passed. It was a problem a few years ago, and I think it violates this provision. She'll be punished by a fine of not exceeding $200. Well, in the past, I don't know, month, I've probably gotten about six calls from people from South Main Street, Depot Street, Forest Street, North Bow Street, and I guess this is occurring again. Now, I'm sure it's other places too, but that's what the residents called me.
And they're telling you not to go through their trash?
Right, no. I take the good stuff, and the rest I give it to you guys. So, anyways, I talked to Jerry today. So, we already have the bylaw. I think it was the chief who enforced this several years ago, so I think if it's okay, we should probably send a letter to the chief, you know, advising him that this is happening again, and maybe he can talk to certain areas, communities that, you know, this is not allowed, and that, you know, can't be done. It's unhealthy, it's unsafe, and people are worried about, you know, bills and personal stuff-
Privacy.
-that's in the garbage, you know?
Yeah, I actually, I just observed it on my way to work today on West Street, and I think what we're running into is a situation where people may be looking for bottles and cans, but I'm not sure exactly what they're looking for. But I think the point really is, and I did observe this person cutting the drawstrings on the trash bags and to gain access, and, you know, fifteen minutes later, the crows are into the trash, or animals are into the trash. So, we don't need the health concerns that are associated with it. We did put that in our bylaws specifically, as you said, Dean, to protect the privacy of individuals. People have an expectation when they put things in the trash that it goes to the waste and landfill or wherever it is, but that people aren't rummaging through it as it's on their curbside. Any thoughts, Brian, comments?
No, no, I agree with you. So, we're asking the police to enforce the bylaw.
All right, if you could send a note?
Absolutely.
The chief, letting them know we have this concern, and we've heard from residents and observed it.
And as you both know, when we first started this illegal immigration situation, two of the first items that we tackled were the check cashing and this particular thing, and then everything else came about from there.
Okay. Any new business from the board member? I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't go to you on old business.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. Dave Morganelli had sent us a letter a couple of meetings back where he would like to look into starting a farmer's market in the town of Milford, which I think is a great idea. And he sent an email today, and I think probably the best way to maybe get this started would be to solicit volunteers that might want to serve on an ad hoc committee to report to this board as to what might be necessary to put this type of an operation into place. I think you've got some overlap, obviously, in terms of location, dealing with private vendors, Board of Health issues, and I think a committee might be able to explore that and get back to us with what might be needed. So, I know David would love to serve on that committee, so maybe if we could make him the first appointment, and then through the media, ask if there's anyone who'd like to serve on it as a volunteer, you know, then we could do that. That would give them at least some indisher of authority to be able to get some information and report back to us.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I did. We got the correspondence from Town Council about the vacancy in the office of Treasurer, and his alternative approach as opposed to the first one, which dealt exclusively with Chapter 41, would be to seek town meeting approval for special legislation specific to Milford to authorize the appointment of a treasurer and then being able to authorize a contract. So, I put this out there. I don't know if you'd want to have this as an agenda item, but I would certainly be in favor of placing this on the next town meeting warrant for discussion.
All right, why don't we put that? It's a good suggestion. Why don't we put it on the next meeting?
And lastly, I think all of us got this email that I found disturbing from Anthony Fallon, living at 10 Ravenna Street, about some serious problems, I think, with the build-out that's going on at the Crystal Room and allegations of the Milford Police simply not being responsive. So, I see that Mr. Fallon through Larry Duncan is going to be meeting with the Planning Board on July 16th. The Crystal Room, as far as I know, hasn't started business yet, but they hold a license that we issue. I think it's worth it to have the management in here, to have a discussion with them, and maybe preempt any problems that might erupt. And also, I'd like to get a detailed report from the police, including all of the calls that Mr. Fallon has placed, and the response, and the outcome of what the police officers did in response to those calls. I'm not looking for a summary report from the chief. I want to see the actual calls coming in to see if, in fact, these calls did occur, as Mr. Fallon indicated they did, and the outcome that happened.
Why don't we get that reported? It'd be my preference to get that report prior to making any scheduled appointment with the license holder. I'd like to look at that as well. I think having that information would be helpful in making me, in helping me decide whether a meeting is warranted.
Okay. And then, if Rick, I guess, if you could get back to Fallon and just indicate to him what we're doing, because, you know, he, you know, he says, you know, is there anyone out there can help me? So, if you could respond to him that we're requesting-
Information from the chief.
-the police department reports, and I know John Erickson put his report on here, but I think some of the stuff that Fallon talks about goes towards some enforcement issues. And if, in fact, some of this stuff is true, I think it's a foreshadowing of some things to come in that location.
And what I'd like to do is also, because some of the questions raised by Mr. Fallon raise questions about whether something complies with zoning bylaws or the permit, I'd like to get a definitive answer in the next day or two from Larry Duncan from Planning and John Erickson as to whether those, whether they view the claims made by Mr. Fallon as being of compliance, or is the site in compliance? Because they're the definitive word on those in terms of what the permit is and the, any compliance issues.
Well, John says the parking lot illumination is not in violation.
I understand. Just, I want to make sure that it's not in violation of what, the permit?
In violation of the site plan or the bylaw.
Right. Well, the issue that I had is that Mr. Fallon represents that Larry Duncan said that it was in violation. So, now we have what appears to be a conflict between two public officials.
Okay, all right. Well, let's get some reports and take a look at it, and then we can talk about it.
I did reach out to them briefly today and told them that might be happening, so I will follow up on those.
Anything else, Brian?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any new business?
That's the place on Cedar Street?
Yes.
Yeah, the old Jean's place.
Right, yeah, that awful, century house.
Century House, there you go.
Hey, Rick, not bad.
No, no, Jean got it. I can't take credit. Yeah, I can't take credit.
And the Owl Club, I think was across the street, right?
I don't know.
Before my time.
But if anything bad happened there, I wasn't there.
Oh, sure. Mr. Chairman, I just have one more. I just wanted to, I got a few calls from the residents of Bancroft Park, and they would like to know if I can work with them. And they have a park there, and I guess it's in disarray, and there are a lot of kids in the area, and they want to know if they can, if we can try to come up with a plan to bring it back to life. So, I'm going to try to, you know, meet with them, try to come up with a plan, and then I'll bring it to the board members, you know?
Okay.
Draper Park?
Bancroft Park, yeah.
Oh, Draper Park, right? Bancroft, is that what you're talking about, behind the church?
Yeah.
At Draper Park?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Brian, any new business?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have correspondence. We have regulations relating to health insurance. I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to-
Yes.
-read through it. Any thoughts? Jerry's making some recommendations in terms of having read some prior case law and some sightings he has here. Says, "In my view, the proposed regulations would provide a degree of fairness to people who have acted in good faith and certain expectations will not be denied what they've earned. At the same time, it would be more difficult for employees and former employees to manipulate the system to obtain undue benefits." So, is it, is there any thoughts or questions that the board has related to this memo?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think Jerry's, you know, as the memo says, trying to assist people and also prevent people from taking advantage of the situation. So, I would be in favor of pursuing this as recommended by Jerry.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
All right, I'll also vote in favor of it, so it tightens up some of our roles related to retiree participation and to which retirees gain that benefit. You know, what would be helpful is if, what would be helpful is that employees get a letter saying that this regulation's been adopted, and it just frequently asks questions. Typically, you'd see an HR department, say, for future, going forward. If you're planning on retiring, understand these regulations if you want that benefit.
Okay.
All right. Town Accountant, Audit of Cash. We have a recommendation from Zach Taylor with the recent resignation of Town Treasurer. Is the option of the former treasurer or new treasurer to call an audit of cash throughout the transition date. He's not recommending that and saying that, given the timeframe and due to the fact that timing of this transition falls so close to the town's fiscal year-end, it's my opinion that the town let the cash books be audited within the normal year required, yearly required audit. I don't think that takes a motion. That's his recommendation. It's actually no action, so. Next, we have a letter from Maureen Black Guido. She's advising the board that she intends to retire from her position at, within the town of Milford. Last day of work will be August 30th, 2013. Actual retirement sometime in the month of September. She has some very nice things to say about her relationships with town employees, and so we accept this resignation with deep regret.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Also, we-
Probably send a letter of appreciation, Rick.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, second it.
In favor, unanimous. That's all we have for scheduled appointments, correspondence. We do have a matter for executive session. It's our intention to go into executive session-
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
-to meet with Town Council Moody as it relates to fire association collective bargaining. And it also means that we won't be returning to open meeting. There's a motion to go into executive session.
Second it.
All right. I'll take, I also vote in favor. I'll take a roll call vote as well.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And again, thank you for joining us this evening. That does conclude our regularly scheduled agenda.